Welcome, welcome to the Poetry Town Council meeting, a special meeting of our beautiful town of Poetry, Texas on July 12th, 2022, 6:30 PM. We welcome you and want you to feel heard, valued, informed, and connected to your town and its council. We welcome diversity of opinion and what minority views as well as majority views to be heard. We also appreciate mutual respect despite opposing view. Please remember to announce your name and address when you address the council. So Sheri?
I will.
Okay, she's gonna...
Coram Edinson?
Here.
Terry Fowe?
Here.
Mr. Apes?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. Jaffe?
Here.
Mayor Sinkovich?
Here. Okay, Coram is confirmed. And we're gonna rise for pledge of allegiance. Council member Gatsy will lead us in that.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please bow your head for prayer. Father God, thank you for this study. Thank you for the heat. I know somewhere there's somebody that's asking for it. Please send us some rain soon. We desperately need it, and a cool breeze this evening would be appreciated as well. Thank you in advance for all of the many blessings that you will continue to shower down on us even though we certainly, most of us, don't deserve it. I pray that you would keep everybody here in a positive tone tonight, as Tara said, supporting one another even where we have our differences, and may the meeting that we're about to have glorify you in all ways. I pray all these things to your Son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, so under F, items of community interest, just one, Josh Sinkovich, who normally spends like an hour and a half or two hours setting up our sound with all of our microphones, is away on his honeymoon. And so we have kind of reverted to an easier system. Thank you, Kevin, for putting that up. But we'll only have, we'll be sharing two microphones tonight. So, and the church has apparently bought one air conditioning unit, but they're still lacking another one, thus we still have the heat. So my apologies for the heat, and we'll just, we'll try and make this a quick meeting so we can get out of, out of the heat. All right, so under G, special agenda, number one, discuss and consider the gift of land via general warranty deed from Poetry Plaza to the town of Poetry for a town hall site on 1.03 acres of real property generally located at CR 323 and Longhorn driveway. Since that is my property owned jointly by my husband and myself, I will refrain from any conversation on this as it's a conflict of interest. So Mayor Proten Anderson will lead that discussion.
Okay, this is, that's one of the four, but all, all four of them relate to the move to the, of the town hall from current location at Camp Brown Cemetery to possibly this property in Poetry Plaza, which Tara just mentioned. The second issue's got to do with an easement for the driveway, which we'll have to have from Longhorn. And the third one is relating to the proposals for the move and some of the costs that are involved. And then the fourth one's gonna be relating to the moving company, which is gonna do the, the work we're proposing. Anyway, so to go to the first item, which is, and by the way, this meeting, in my mind, is very critical and time sensitive, that we have roughly another month before we, our time expires from the gift of the building from Camp Brown Cemetery. So we have some urgency, and that's a reason we're having this special meeting, just to focus on this. So the issue of the building, the first issue is, is the, we have a warranty deed and a legal contract that was drawn up by our attorneys, one of the attorneys that works for us, and it relates to this land. And if nobody's really familiar, I'll just describe it. On 323, just before you get to Longhorn driveway, there's a sign. It's about one acre on the left, just to the, it's, it's in north of that driveway, and that it adjoints 323. And it's kind of rough right now, so there's gonna be some site work required and some things done to actually move the building from the annex in the campground to there, should we agree that this is the path we're gonna go. And by the way, this is the only option we have right now. We've looked at others, and nothing has come about, so we're down to this, and we have one month before we, our time limit expires for moving from campground. So the warranty deed, and I'm not sure if anybody has seen it, or is, it was, I believe it was posted on the website, right Tara? No?
There's a packet over there.
Oh, there's a packet over there that describes it. And it's basically, to summarize it, it's Tara and Kevin through Poetry Plaza that owns the property, this one acre, 1.03 acres, is agreed to donate this to the town, and the town would take it over, and it would go into perpetuity. It's a lease, it's a gift, rather. The easement for the driveway is also something of a gift from Longhorn, that they agreed to let us use their driveway and also create some parking space. So this, plus a lot of other gifts that we've been given from Brett Patterson along his work, and from a lot of the other folks that have worked on the annex, including people here at the table, it's, it's just an enormous amount of work, and even some of the people that have agreed to help move are donating time. So we've had a lot of donation in this, and we wanna recognize them, should this go through and we agree to it. So I guess the first step is, is on the council, is to see if anybody has any questions on the council before we ask for comments from the audience. See anybody on the council have any questions or issues they would like to raise about the general warranty deed?
Just for those who haven't had a chance to look it over, the, it is a gift, it's not an easement, there's no pay, there's no payment exchange. In the event that the town no longer uses it as a town hall, that it would revert back to Poetry Plaza or its heirs. So that's the only stipulation. So, and it didn't include any remediation clause as far as the, the site goes, like we wouldn't have to remove a set system or anything like that. So just wanted to make that as a point of clarity.
I guess, just to point out that the period of use we have, if we don't use it for a period of six months, then it reverts back to Poetry Plaza.
So I have another question. The, the land, this is all talking about the, the land, what happens to the building if this, if this exception to the conveyance or warranty happens? Does the building sell the property? Is it city property? What happens to the building?
That's a good question. I guess it would come back to us, or whoever's on the council at that time.
This, this is Poetry Plaza giving you interest, so we would have, it wouldn't include the, the, that's a great question for another document, but I don't think it would be included in this.
But if, but if their expectation that that building and all the penitents stayed on that property?
The way I read it, since it wasn't stipulated, and I would say that we would not be responsible for removing the building if we no longer had, had use of it. And if we did have use of it, then we would move it to where it goes, but again, that's not stipulated in this, because this is just the land grab, so that would definitely be something we need to work for.
Or, or sell it, the building, some option like that. But it isn't stated in the warranty deed at all.
So it doesn't need to be in the warranty deed?
The warranty deed, because the building is not, now, yeah, it's only involves the raw land itself.
And the other question I had is since successors, and I just wanted to make sure because we'll have successors in our, in our easement agreement as well. So if the, if the businesses, either one of them, Poetry Plaza or Organic sells, is that considered a successor?
The, well, the way I read it is, and the lawyer, I guess, would need to answer it, but I read it as that the easement, just taking the easement, if Organic, if Longhorn Organic changes, that it still succeeds as an easement to us. If Poetry Plaza no longer exists, then the way I read it is, is that it is ours, there's no easement, it is...
It says successors, so grantor, grantor heirs and successors?
That's the way I read it.
So if they sell, then it goes with the new property owner, is that...
This, this would be a stipulation, that...
They would have to put in a title, yeah. The title company...
The Longhorn Organic's moving that specifies it more specifically, but that's still a concern on this specific one.
Well, yeah, I mean, I guess my question's, could Longhorn Organic's or their successor cut us off on the roadway? And the way I read it, the answer is no, because of that succession statement.
But I, I don't think there's any plan, but if Poetry Plaza sells to Tractor Supply, are they obligated to continue this warranty deed?
The way I read it is yes, it is ours. I mean, it's a good question for the lawyers, but it would seem clear to me that it's still ours, or the town of Poetry, not ours personally.
If you're looking at page two, that would be an assignment, that their successors will assign, in that case, the employer, the company, would be assigned the, the debt, so to speak. Maybe still have the warranty.
I'll move it to the speaker's room. No, I'm sorry, in public.
I'm sorry? Are there any more comments from the, the council? Okay, I guess we have five people that have signed up. Kevin Sinkovich, is the first one to sign up?
Kevin Sinkovich, 11090, CR 2400, Poetry. Did you guys have any questions for me that's, that you said signed up?
Yeah, Kevin, I guess the one question I had is the pipe fence, and Tara indicated we can cut down or do something with the fence to get the building in, because right now, there's no way to get it inside the property without cutting part of the fence.
Yes, sir, you can cut the fence. I was actually gonna try to do that for you on Friday, if you guys accepted the, the gift, and, because I got apparently dirt watering duty if you decide to have the dirt work done. And then we were gonna leave little, little stub up on the fence so that we could weld it back in place, once the, the building was moved into place, and, and then cut a little gate into it. Also on the, hopefully it's in there, I haven't seen the paperwork you guys look at yet, but there was also a, is it eight foot or 10 foot easement inside the property?
It's a utility. Eight foot utility?
Yeah, it's an eight foot utility easement, right? You can, you can answer, okay.
It's eight foot.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that along that fence line of the Borsu and Longhorn Organic? Southeast lot line running northeast, so that would have to be...
It would be, if the outside of the property that we're getting, it's an eight feet rectable fence, eight foot out, and so that we could run a water line, or, there's already poles and stuff, and we have, maybe internet, I don't know, but that would be, just need to...
It's a utility.
Because we're basically landlocked ourselves in the back here, I know.
And my second question, Kevin, is ID 216055, that it looked to me like that is the total, total of the property.
It is.
And then with that, was when you purchased it, has there been a survey that segments out that, or will we need a survey to segment that?
It's exactly... From the center of the road, it's exactly 311 feet back. It's 100% in the town of Poetry, which I think it was one of the requirements we were looking for, when we were looking for a piece of property. And it was recently surveyed, two, three years ago, and it might still be good, but the, the line that you're seeing there is Kaufman's, I don't know if you can call it a survey. Yeah, Kaufman went in and put their line 311 feet from the center of the road, and that's the line that you're seeing there. And then they, they assigned the ID to it, and then that's what the attorney, I believe, used as the, as the piece of property for the document that he put together. Did I answer your question?
Well, my real question is, you know, we don't wanna...
Yeah, dispute about where the land is, where the property boundaries are, is, are we clear, or is there a need to have it surveyed so that down the road, somebody doesn't overstep from what we think is the boundary lines?
For me, I'm 100% clear. Whatever's in the town there, 311 feet back is what my wife and I are doing to the town of Poetry.
Okay, well, if you're fine, I'm fine.
Glenn Strauss?
Glenn Strauss, 72208, 4544.
Nice question, we give you a microphone.
Oh, you'll be sorry. Just, just one issue here, and it's been my experience in buying and selling key properties, is that it would cost money with a survey. I highly recommend a survey, so nothing comes back to buy this later, that's all.
Okay, Shelley Smith?
Okay, I, I feel like if this is a gift from the Sinkovics to the town, it should be an all-out gift. And if, for whatever reason, we don't end up using the land, or, you know, we disincorporate whatever, that the land should then be auctioned off, and the profit to that go back to the town, because the town will have paid money to approve the lot, and put in utilities and put in everything else. So I really think that you might wanna just make it a clean cut. And if they wanted to, if you wanna auction it off and they want to repurchase it, that's fine, but, but I think it kind of makes things a little sticky, and it seems, there's a certain amount of impropriety in there that doesn't feel right. Thank you.
Patrick Smith?
I am a attorney in Texas, but I'm not a, do not specialize in real estate. And to me, if I was being asked to sign this general warranty deed, either as grantor or grantee, I would want it spelled out in clear, unequivocal language, what happens if the condition is fulfilled, which means that the property goes back to the grantor. Can anybody tell me that they know, or that they have been explained by the attorneys or some attorney as to what happens to the building if the failure condition is met? Because one reading of this is that it goes back in fee simple to the grantor. That raises a flag to me, well, if at that point in time, if the building is sitting on a foundation attached to the ground, then does it go with it? And that's my question. And then the next thing is, is if you don't know the answer to that question, why would you sign off on this until you did? I have other remarks, and I'll probably run out of time, but another thing that strikes me, because this is somewhat unusual, that you have a piece of property that goes all the way up to the road, but we're gonna have access come from the neighboring piece of property. Once this becomes, if it becomes part of the town of Poetry, and it becomes the town hall, I believe it becomes a public forum under state and federal law. And once someplace, part of the city government becomes a public forum, the public has a right to access it and to protest on it. And my question for the mayor and the council members is because we're doing this unusual easement arrangement, will that entitle Longhorn to say, "We don't want protesters accessing the easement to get to the town hall"? Because the town couldn't do that. Does anybody know the answer to that question? Okay, well, I hope y'all will think about those and get resolutions to those questions before you make serious, long-term decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. And Sheri Edinson?
Thank you.
Okay, so, just hearing your comments, we have the warranty deed. Is there anybody on the council that has any more comments or questions before we ask for a vote?
And just a, a couple of comments. First off, Sheri and I lived in Curville for a while. There's a football stadium in the middle of town in Curville that was donated to the town, the, the land was donated to the town for the exclusive use of a football stadium. And if the town, no longer, the ISD in that case, no longer uses the area for a football stadium, then the, the ground, the land returns back to that family's trust. So this isn't a out-of-the-box kind of weird scenario, so it didn't raise any specific red flags to me. Patrick's concern about the easement is a concern for me as well, excuse me, Mr. Smiths. I think that, that particular easement is the Longhorn Organic's easement, which is basically what we'll use as a parking lot. That would not prohibit anybody from protesting on the grounds of the town hall itself.
Okay, can I clarify? The easement says, the easement to the town of Poetry is secondary to the rights of Longhorn. So if Longhorn says, "We don't want these protesters coming across our easement," they add that authority, what would be the town's position?
To use the other gate?
The easement's the second agenda.
Yeah, the, the easement with Longhorn is, is a separate item, and more than willing, more than willing to hear, hear you out on that as well, that there would be a point of egress to get into the property, that I, I would expect there's going to be a point of egress to get into the property that is not through Longhorn Organic's. And so I would, I would expect that we're going to have another gate that you can still get in, but, you know, there's, there's still, it's not a real wide shoulder there, but there is still a little bit of ground there that we can, we can make sure that all civil rights are represented and respected.
Okay, so I guess, Justin, oh, sorry, Terry, do you have something?
I, I mean, Mr. Smith brings it up too. I'm all for moving forward, I just wanna make sure that we're sure, because even the contracts we had with the Poetry Cemetery had separation agreements, who got what. And I just wanna make sure, I don't think it's the intent that the building would stay there, but do we need to make sure that, that that's stated in here, that this is only, you know, at one point, it talks about real property, and real property's easy to explain, because that's, that's what's filed in Kaufman County. But then further into the document, it just says, "Property, property, property." I mean, you can define a lot of things, it's property, the building is property. So I don't know, I mean, I don't, I don't wanna do this wrong just for the sake of doing it, I understand the, the need, the necessity to move forward, but, whatever y'all think.
And, and I, I guess I just have a more distinct line drawn, because to me, this general warranty deed only concerns the, the grass and what's under it. It doesn't concern the building at all. I would be in favor of having, since the, the building, as long as we receive it, and we have officially received it, belongs to the town, I would be in favor of having an ordinance that specifies what happens to the building should this revert back to Poetry Plaza. But I don't think that that specifically should interfere with accepting this general warranty deed for the land itself. I mean, there, there's a lot of moving parts here, and I just want us to be able to isolate it down to which one we're talking about right now. And to me, the, the land is all we're talking about at this point.
Yeah, without a lawyer or the person who wrote this meeting present, it's hard for us to say conclusively what it is, but I agree with Brian, I think we're just talking about the dirt. And the building itself, if something happened to the town of Poetry, it could either be sold, or that would be something for the city council at that time to settle, and I agree with Brian, should have an ordinance addressing that what-if. I mean, we can't get to every what-if now, because there are a lot of them, but we can address things that we wanna come back with an ordinance or some other motion from the council as we go forward. So I guess at this point, it's, what we're getting is the dirt, that's this one item, not counting the, you know, the easement or the moving cost, just the dirt. Are we gonna accept the dirt? The 1.03 acres as-is from Poetry Plaza, and with the general warranty deed that is there, which it indicates that Mayor Protem has to sign, which is myself, so, but it's gotta be notarized. So I guess I would ask, is there a motion that we accept the general warranty deed as-is?
Yes, is there an...
Is there an option to kind of close this loop that we, as we would if we were voting on an ordinance, to stipulate that we will add a paragraph that says, "Any improvements to the property will be removed by the town," or something like that? I mean, something that just clarifies?
As an ordinance, or as...
Well, as a, I don't, I don't know if it would, I'm not a general warranty deed kind of guy, so I don't know. I mean, you could put deed restrictions in, right? You can talk about how land can be restricted use and all of that, so I just wonder if that's, because otherwise, we're back to, if we do a separate piece of paper after this, to me, that's more like a lease. And we're not leasing it, we're actually...
Become owners.
Yeah, we're gonna become owners as long as we use it as our town hall. I don't know, I'm just wondering if there's a, a way that we can go ahead and vote on it tonight, but require that Emily or whoever drafted this add in a sentence or two that says, you know, if, if we default or it falls back, we get to take our stuff or something, or we have the option to take our stuff. Maybe, maybe it doesn't require, but maybe it gives us the option to take it.
Take the building?
Yes.
Well, with it, start.
Yeah, I'm also in favor of that, that's actually what I was gonna suggest too, if we can get away with it, because that's a great idea, and I don't think we need to go into any great detail, because, you know, in the practical world, it's probably not even much of a consideration. I mean, as long as we have two meetings there a year, I mean, PMZ can show up a couple times in a year, and we can spend as much time getting stuff out of there as we want. So I mean, it's not like we'll spend half a year and just forget to do anything, and then the Sinkovics is gonna pull the rug from out on us or something, so I think, a couple months.
We just need to use it as our town hall, so as long as we give our file, cash, and send our laptop there.
It's true, pretty much, good.
And I guess the answer that Mike, actually, this has gotta be notarized, so I can't, we can't do it here tonight, I can't sign it. So what I can do in the morning...
Clarification, yeah, both of you.
Is she here?
She's on.
Yeah, well, it, what I was gonna say is, if I can call Emily or the lawyer that wrote this and ask if there could be a statement, something to the effect of what Mike said, added, scheme of...
Right, that's what I'm saying, prove it.
Yeah.
Add that thing.
Okay, okay, and I guess to get, to get the words down clearly, Mike, you're saying...
And I guess to get the words down clearly, Mike, you're saying?
Okay. So I would make a motion that we approve the general warranty deed with the condition that we add language specifying what happens to the town's assets if we were to default or meet the condition, whatever they call it. Yeah. And I would encourage us to write it that we have the option to take our building and related stuff that aren't necessarily obligated to. So if we leave it, then Kevin gets to dig a hole and bury it. But if we want it, we can put a truck under it and haul it off again, so.
Okay. Have a vote? All in favor?
One last? So are we adding that we're going to specify what happens to any town property that is on this land should the failure condition be met and we have, it's no longer at the Town Hall? Is that essentially what we're saying?
That's my understanding. I'm going to call Emily tomorrow morning and ask if that be added, if it can be added, and its contingent on that.
So we're not signing anything until we get those couple of sentences, but we're approving?
Yes.
Good site. We're approving the deed so that other things can go forward.
And assuming Emily can add in or lawyer can add in or sentencing that. Okay. So on that basis, can we have a vote? All in favor? Okay. Motion item number one, item number one passed. Item two is discussed and considered an easement agreement with Longhorn Organics for access to the proposed Town Hall site. And I presume the package for that is over there on the table too?
It's in the package.
Okay. So I'd ask the council that if anybody has questions or comments regarding the easement agreement for access?
Since this is a Longhorn agreement?
Okay. The one question is, "On easement property, 32-foot access and parking easement from County Road 323 along the northwestern lot line terminating at .311 feet from the center line of County Road 323 where the territorial limits of the Town of Poetry end, and 32-feet driveway access." And I have to say, I don't understand. I thought that was addressed up in the very first words, first part of the paragraph. I guess I'm confused as to why we need to say that when it seems to me like it's already addressed.
Well, that property is bigger than, that property is larger than what the given is. So that's about what part of that property is the given. And it's decided, such as the warranty property.
So they're giving us access to a 32-foot wide driveway 311 feet long. It also happens to be part of their driveway.
But that property, that top of it comes down, that gave them access to the back is larger than 32 feet. So they're saying, "Here's your 32 feet drive."
Yep.
Yes.
So it's wider. They don't want us just driving and parking everywhere. You can have this section of it. That's why they're specifying the 32 feet on the northwest side of County Road 323.
Well, actually, it's the 32-foot all the way, it's the?
And.
And the shoulder, and the shoulder. So you get the shoulder and the driveway.
And Tom, when you were reading, you said .311?
That's 311. 311. At a point, 311 feet from the center line of 323. The first part says 32-foot access and parking easement to County Road 323 along the northwestern lot line. And that's why I thought it was already addressed. But not a lawyer, so I wouldn't, oh, but anyway, I guess Tara's point was to add the words.
So I think I can speak to this because this doesn't involve my property.
That's correct.
Okay. So this doesn't involve my property, so I can't speak to this. So I did, Doug Montgomery, the attorney who specializes in real property, did write this. He did talk about adding in an unrestricted access for the driveway as well as the shoulder, which is 32 feet of their easement area, which we, the town, would use as a parking. So if you look at the map, it's more clear. It's hard to describe unless you see the map. In the packet, there is a map. And so in order to access the parking, you have to use their driveway, which their driveway is also 32 feet. I have a cut on my finger because of the tape measuring it. So it is 32 feet, then the shoulder for parking that they're very willing to allow us to use indefinitely, even if they sell, is also 32 feet, which will accommodate any Texas-sized truck. Well, not any, but most.
So what are the words at the end of easement property?
Well, just to add in, the 32-feet driveway with unrestricted access. Very simple. And I was concerned about number five, but then I realized the reason it's in there, he says, "Grante has the right to remove or relocate any fences within the easement property along or near its border, boundary lines if reasonably necessary to construct, install, maintain, replace, remove." So, but in order, like Kevin said, in order to get the building, Emily have to cut it, and this is just allowing that to happen.
So a point of clarity there is the fence in the ownership of Longhorn? Or is the fence in the ownership of the town at that point?
Currently, it is shared.
Could the answer to the survey?
The survey run the line right down the center of the fence.
But we have the, the language allows us to kind of hold the fence?
Yes.
For construction, etc.
So maybe this is what we're discussing, but back to Patrick's comment on number four, secondary easement. I appreciate the point he made. This probably could be applied the way he was thinking. But I also see this as maybe Longhorn trying to protect the fact that they may need to get trucks up and down that driveway. And so if we happen to have cars parked all over it, they have the right to come out and say, "Hey, move your cars because I got a delivery coming in", kind of a thing, right? If I was giving somebody an easement across my property, I would want to make sure that it was clear to them that I am the owner of the property and get primary use if I need to get trucks or tractors in. But maybe some words, and maybe this is what you were saying, Tara, that just says, "The intent of this clause is not to limit the public's access for any reason, right? Protest or cheerleading or anything. I mean, good or bad, we wouldn't want it limited." And then I think to your point or somebody's point, Ryan, we could always cut a gate in the roadside and make that the protester's entrance, you know? Not that we're intending to have a lot of protesters.
So their driveway is quite large, and they have smaller truck deliveries currently. They have maybe five a week, and they're smaller. So even if there was a secretary parked there, you know, two days a week, I don't think it would be, make a difference at all. But to your point, there is also a shoulder on the other side, so it's not like they're cramped at all.
But how do we protect, to the point that was made by him, that this doesn't get abused, number four, as a way to control? Who's allowed to show up? Meeting, who's allowed to?
Well, of course, most of our meetings are at night. So they quit at five PM, and they're not there on weekends.
If there's a problem, we can always just?
They're very agreeable. I don't think?
We can just build our own access if there really was a problem. I don't think there would be, but in such a scenario, I mean, I wouldn't, like you were saying, I wouldn't give my land over unless I had something like this in here because I'm not going to block myself up for a donation. So I don't expect that to be changed, but.
One point is that this is their easement for their utilities. So if we were to put gravel on it, we need to be aware that under the soil there is their electric and their internet line and their water line. So we just need to be aware of that. And this contract does allow for, like, if Longhorn were to sell, it does pass to the new owners. So it does allow for it to be transferred. Okay. Number two, Kevin Sinkovich?
Kevin Sinkovich, 1-0-9-0, CR 2400. Assuming you're right, if you guys decide that you want to make the Longhorn access a secondary access, you could easily just cut a, you know, you have to mow down some really nice pecan trees, but you could make a really nice parking lot in the front and just have access directly off and out of the use of Longhorn access if you want to. So that wouldn't, I'd hate to see you cut down the trees because I love the trees, but you absolutely could do that, so.
It would take quite a bit of dirt, I think, to do that because it's a low area that kind of, but it could be done. It is possible.
There's plenty of dirt in Poetry to do that.
Okay, Glenn Strauss? Okay. Shelley Smith? Patrick Smith?
Patrick Smith, 1-873-01565. The easement agreement provides that the easement to the town is a secondary easement, which makes it subordinate to the rights of Longhorn, which I agree with many of you have said. That seems fair. It's their property. The part that gives me some concern is the first sentence of paragraph five. And you have to take into account, now, I'm going by my casual observations, which you may have different observations, but my expectation is, since the Town Hall will not be used a lot, that really 95% of the wear and tear on the easement's coming from the big trucks from Longhorn and not from passenger vehicles that are going to go to and from the Town Hall. This agreement, though, says improvement and maintenance of the easement property will be at the sole expense of Grante, which is the Town of Poetry. So once again, just like the prior document, I just want to make sure everybody who's going to vote on this understands these 18-wheelers that come?
But that's not the road. So to clarify, okay, sorry. I just want to clarify something, but I'll wait for you to finish.
Okay. Well, this easement agreement that we just got to see for the first time 20 minutes ago, are you saying that the secondary easement is something other than that what appears today to be like a rock road going from 323 back to Longhorn?
Yes, sir. The easement is a shoulder to the road. The road is separate, so we have access through their driveway, but the easement is actually the shoulder, which is next to the fence. So on the picture diagram, you can see, it kind of looks like a keyboard piano. You'll see the Longhorn driveway, and then to the left of that is the suggested parking. And that is what, you know, we're saying, hey, we could mow it, keep it up. Because they're currently doing nothing with it except they have their lines underneath it. But he did say they have interns that could maybe help.
Okay. Well, when it says the dominant estate property and it says 0.56 acre portion of the 11.994 acre lot, do you have something that shows that, that the dominant estate property that you're going to sign an easement agreement for? And I saw some kind of a faded inkjet printer. Yeah, but I mean, what's the easement? Okay. And what, does it include the rock roadway? Okay. So the easement, okay, you've seen this? Okay. The easement that's being negotiated for is not from access to the roadway by that driveway. It's for a little parking lot. So that the Town of Poetry then has no ability, if Longhorn decides they want to be unreasonable or unfriendly, they can put a gate across that rock road. And then how do you get to the parking lot?
That's what I was saying when he read the addition. And 32-feet driveway, unrestricted access to be added to the agreement that says easement property. So Doug was going to add that. He ran out of time, and I said, "Well, we can just add it."
Okay. So once again, we don't have what anyone in the room thinks is a final draft of the easement agreement. Is that correct?
Well, we're here tonight to vote on that.
Okay. But let me, once again, we get back to recurring theme at all these meetings. How do the citizens read and interact with our elected leaders to give opinions on things when, well, really, this is not the final thing? We're going to add some stuff? How do the citizens participate?
Just like you are now.
By ambush?
Well, that's?
Okay.
My time's up. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, Shelley, we're going to allow you to speak. I forgot earlier. Shelley Smith, 1-873-01565. What happens when Longhorn, who is already kind of a point of contention around the neighborhood? What happens when they want special favors, but yet we owe them this gratitude for the easement? Are y'all going to be able to separate yourselves and not?
They're not in our town.
Yet. We have a lot of donations going from over 100 people. So, you know, I don't see that that would be?
I think that's what this agreement would be about. This is the agreement between the town and Longhorn, but there are no special favors outside of the agreement. Now, I'm probably naive, but that would be how I see it. I wouldn't see that they deserve it.
I wouldn't see that they would deserve any special favors because they signed an agreement allowing us to use part of the driveway under no duress. I mean, this is what they agreed to. This is what they're allowing, and they're not asking for anything in return. So I would not expect that we would be giving them anything in return.
Okay. I'm just thinking, like, okay, if they were caught driving a truck that was 34,000 pounds or whatever like that, and they got a ticket for it, would we kind of like say, "Hey, y'all are Longhorn, it's okay"? Because I guarantee you, there's a lot of us that are going to watch.
Okay. So to your point, so if any truck in town has a destination to their workplace, then they can drive that truck. That's anybody that's across the board.
If that was across the top of my head.
Okay.
Thought. But you get what I'm saying.
No, I understand.
You get what I'm saying?
So we're not law enforcement? If it's posted and they go across the bridge, then yes, they would get a ticket, just like any other business owner.
Okay. I'm just saying that you guys need to know that we, there will be some serious eyeballs on what's happening with the town and what's happening, you know, giving favors to friends who donate.
Okay. So I hear your point. But Longhorn has generously allowed this easement. They're very agreeable. There's been nothing in return whatsoever. It probably will be, you know, hopefully, it'll be congenial. They've been very gracious. They are clean and quiet, so, you know, they have limited charge.
I'm sure they are very nice people. I'm sure they are.
Well, they're? I'm sure they are very nice people. I'm sure they are. I'm not saying they're so... I'm saying that as a town, we need to be really, really careful on that.
I'm sure that you all will...
So we're all bound by quid pro quo laws. I mean, we can be held personally liable for that. The second thing that should give you some, I guess, uh, sense of security is, is, is the ma, the mayoral system we have. I mean, we don't, we don't conduct business that doesn't happen here. Uh, I mean, tickets and stuff like that. But what I was gonna say, they didn't ask for anything. A lot of times businesses will ask for tax abatements or, or whatever. So in my mind, what, what I'm, what I'm gonna support is what's in this document. They didn't ask for any special favors and they will not be given any special favors. They can't go back on this just like we can't go back on this. So they can't say, well, I want a favor. Well, you won't give it to me. I'm taking this back. They're locked in just like we are. Well, I say that maybe, I mean, Patrick, you have a law degree. I don't see any exits on this, on this, so... Okay. But we are bound by quid pro quo and, and, and I won't be crossing any of those boundaries myself.
Okay, Sherri Benson? Okay, so, um, with the amendment that Councilmember Anderson read, um, so it says thirty-two foot, um, access and parking easement from County Road. Now, see, um, yeah, it does start at County Road three twenty-three along the northwestern lot line and terminate it at the point three hundred eleven feet from the center line of the County Road three twenty-three. You'll notice, um, and thirty-two feet driveway unrestricted access. I think that's key. We have to have that unrestricted access for this, um, to, to be valid. Do we have a motion for this?
So we stipulate on the driveway for three hundred eleven feet. We don't need to drive up to the building. We just want it for three hundred eleven feet.
Yeah, that, that would be considerate because we don't need stragglers to... Right.
They do have a gate up the hill.
They do have a gate that locks at five, um, but that's a good point. I think that's a good point. Uh, unrestricted access up to the three hundred and eleven foot mark. We're at the gate.
Well, I think everything else is in merces of the three hundred eleven.
Okay.
Okay, now, Tara, just there, uh, when I call Emily tomorrow about that phrase we want added to the warranty deed, I should ask about this one.
And you'll be probably, um, working with Doug Montgomery. He's the expert in this. He's the one that did this.
So both of...
I can get you either.
I should call Doug Montgomery, not Emily.
Yes.
Okay.
Save some time. And I can get you his information or you probably even...
I've got him.
Oh, okay. So we have a motion, or do we have a motion to accept with the amendment as listed?
I make the motion. We accept it with that amendment we just discussed.
Is there a second? Seconded by Benson? All those in favor of accepting this with the said amendment? Um, on item, the easement property item, all those in favor? And that passes unanimously? Number three, discuss and consider the proposals for preparing the proposed town hall site to receive the annex building. So we received a number of proposals and I will tell you, um, tried to keep local, um, and I actually did, we'd received a number back. I, I did reach out to Robert Herman of three sixty-five and he spent about an hour, and it was getting dark the night before the July fourth weekend, and he said he would try and get back on Tuesday. I think he just was slammed. And so I texted him and say, hey, are you gonna submit? And he said, you know, because the deadline was Thursday. We were trying to get this to the attorneys to look at, and he said, I'm going out of town. I'm slammed. So, um, just so that folks know, we tried to get as many and broad as we possibly could of the local providers of those services. Um, we did have, um, okay, uh, we did have four, okay, there's a lot to this. Um, first of all, we have to have, of course, Kevin Sinkovich had suggested he will, he will have a tool that will cut the, 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 uh, pole fencing. He said it wouldn't take that long, move thirty feet out, um, and then we'll have to move in a lot of dirt. And this is one reason. It wasn't the first choice because, um, there is some dirt work that needs to happen. Um, and so it is unlevel, so we have to move the dirt in and then, um, we, after consulting, what, four, at least four dirt specialists, I'll call them. Um, they kinda had different takes on it. Longhorn also was trying to donate some soil, but, um, after talking to several of the men who came out, they were saying, well, it's toxic. It's not really sufficient or adequate for a foundation. And so even though they offered it for free of tards, um, well, that's probably not, um, ideal. Um, and so, and then there's the hauling of that because it's in the back of their property was also rather expensive. So you'll see, um, H R Dirtwork, their proposal was actually moving that dirt to the front and it was rather expensive to do that because he was gonna have to rent equipment. The Hall Right Away Services, he was very generous, um, in that he wants to only, he wants to donate to the town his labor. So he has, in order to move the dirt around, once we get the dirt from the dirt, um, field, we'll land the, I guess it would be the Terrell Sandbox, we get the, the, the select field from then, then he's willing to donate his time. We just would pay, so his, he was saying it's norm, it would normally be fifty-five hundred dollars. So every time a truck would come in, he'll take it, spread it out, Kevin will water it, and then it'll be packed down. And then second load, so eighteen loads later, we'll have a, a solid foundation, um, hopefully. So, but he is discounting twenty-five hundred dollars because he, he just said he wants to contribute, um, to the town. Roy City Sand and Gravel, um, Mike Danley, um, he also, um, so when he gave this estimate for eighteen loads of, of select field twenty yards, um, four thousand and fifty dollars, I said, is this for just the transportation cost or is this both? And he said, no, it's both. I wanna donate to the town. Okay, so that, because the, the previous, the, or previous estimates I'd gotten were over six thousand dollars. So that was very generous, um, quote or estimate from, from him as well. So the other, um, so we've got cert, like I said, several things going on. We did have L B J Diversified, um, come out as well. And we had, now, as far as on the piers, the reason that it says forty-five piers, if the, the fellow that has quoted to move, um, the building said he wants a pier every four feet. Um, and because especially it's new dirt, um, and he wants them to go down fourteen foot, um, for, you know. So once we add this dirt, there is the top of the, there's a small pond, and so the top of the dam is, um, part of the structure, but we're gonna add to that. So I know it's hard to describe without a picture, um, but you're welcome to go look at it. But, um, we do have a map, but, um, so all the, and that, so one bid was for the forty, or one quote, excuse me, it's not a bid. One quote for an estimate was well over thirty-two thousand. Blunt Star, um, again, was trying to do a good, a good thing. Um, they're, um, I don't even know, know them, but they're, um, eighty-one hundred dollars, um, for forty-five piers with, with the five, number five by twenty-foot rebar, um, at a twelve inch, twelve inch square by fourteen foot deep, so that the building would be secure in this Texas soil. So...
Are you sure it's a twelve inch circle?
Is it round? Okay, I said twelve inch square, didn't I? Okay, twelve inch round.
So I, I did the due diligence and called everybody because, uh, I just kinda wanna know. And L B J Diversified, uh, I've already talked to Leland and he's here. Uh, so if we need, I guess, an expert opinion, he'd be one. I've, I've asked from, I respect him a lot. But just to move forward, I, I called Northcutt Moving and asked him why that building couldn't sit on Bodar post like it has for the last three decades. And he said it can. And he said that he told them that and that we can. So that being said, he said it had to be a good pad. So let's get back to it being a good pad. Yeah. We, and we can ask him, I'm, we, we build a lot of pads. We just, you know, we bought six hundred yards of dirt last week, so, so the Roy City sand price is too high. I mean, we buy it for six fifty a ton and everybody does, but i- it's fair. It's a fair price. And if Kevin's gonna water it, the, the question becomes how do we get it properly compacted? So if you look at all these bids, if you talk to Hall, I talked to Roger at Hall Right Away, he's gonna use a nine sixty-three truck loader. That will meet a ninety-five percent proctor compaction test that we're not gonna pull. Uh, H R, I called them twice. They never called me back. And then Leland is going to, uh, use the steel roller. So that too would also get us around the ninety-five percent proctor, don't you think, Leland? So that being said, if, if ninety-five percent to a hundred percent is what, is what we're responsible for when we're doing dirt work and concrete work, do we need the piers? It's eighty-one hundred dollar expense for a town that doesn't have much money. And I've got, I've got multiple people telling me, if you build the pad right, we don't need the piers. So... Now, it is a lot of elevation, but you are gonna bring them in six to eight inches loose. I've already talked to Leland about that. Kevin's gonna volunteer the time to water it, I guess. Somebody's watering it.
Yeah.
And, and either Leland or whoever we choose is gonna pack it. So I just wanna question the need for the piers. Now, Northcutt did say he's gonna put forty-five blocks under it, which I thought was extremely heavy, but that's what he does every four feet. But I don't know that that, according to him, he said if the pads go right, we don't need them. So do we wanna spend the money now or not? And that's, that's the research I found.
Oh, who did? Um, so I think on number three, are you signed up to speak? Yes, you are. So, um, did you wanna speak to...
I did. It, it actually is, there actually is concrete beam, beams under it. Now, I spent multiple days on my belly underneath this one, so...
It's not Bodar. Yeah, it's not Bodar.
There's a, there's a big center beam. It goes right down the center. And then there's, uh, I think a beam that goes this way, a beam that goes this way, and the whole building sits on it. And then they actually tied the building via some sort of bolts to them. And, because we had to cut them loose when we were...
Now, the sanctuary, the sanctuary was on brick and it fell off its foundation. And that's why it's in bad shape that it is. But the, um, annex building was built much later and it is on the concrete and has the beams, as he was describing, as he was under it for...
But I think the block, block idea would work though, too.
Okay.
Ninety-five percent compaction is not much lighter than the concrete that you're...
Now, with that said, the upper dam is, um, I think Leland said it was substandard soil. It is not, it is not the quality that select field would be.
But they're gonna cut, you are gonna cut at least four inches, right?
Okay, so Leland's an expert in the field. Can you come on up and answer that, please, sir?
Leland Barnett, one zero five one one, County Road two four sixty-two. We, uh, bring those piers in that we're talking about. We ask them.
Well, we're running out. We're talking about the higher end of that, during that time.
Oh, okay, yes, the soil, the soil in that pool bank is, is cracked up. And what I would do is take it down to four feet.
You'd cut it all the way down?
I'd cut it all the way down to the base of that tree and you'd bring it all up together, you know? There's no use in leaving that soil in and putting good soil beside it.
So what's your opinion on piers? You do concrete work.
Yeah, I do the concrete work and I, without geotechnical, you know, results, geotechnical information about the land that's there. Putting a fourteen-foot pier in there, if you're not sitting on rock or if you're not sitting on a shell, you still have no support underneath it. I don't care how tall your pier is. It's still gonna sink because it's more weight. So you really have to have a report and that pier needs to be into rock or into the shell.
Or a bale.
Or a bale, or a bale.
Rock doesn't start there until about ninety feet.
Yeah, yes. So it's gonna, to my opinion, if you put that much weight on it, that building, because you can see the way the land's doing there now, it's moving all around. So if you put four feet of dirt on top and you go on eleven feet, you've still got ten feet that's in that old soil. Something's gotta hold that building.
That's what I think to your, to your point, Sherri. I know my house is up on blocks and we just go in every few years and check level on it and throw some shims in it and re-level it. And I would think that building is not that gigantic, that we would be able to hire somebody if we get settlement over time to come in and level it up. You know, I'm thinking about how long a term investment this is gonna be. Are we still gonna be in that building fifty years from now, twenty-five years from now? You know, God willing, we'll have something nicer. I don't know if it'll be on that lot or some other lot. How much money do we wanna put into it? And I agree with this gentleman that, you know, just a slick pier and crummy dirt, you just got a lot of concrete. I mean, it's gonna be like a teakost. It's gonna settle over time on its own, just as much as putting a big flat stone and cinder blocks.
So is the proposed placement of the building right there by that tank, is that the best place to put it?
Yes. Unless you're gonna, well, my understanding, it kinda floods down by the road. So your pond being up and your access from a easement being at that elevation, yes, that's the best place to put it.
How big's that pond you looked at it?
It's about half of this, about that.
Okay, so as a previous owner, with the dirt, we excavated to go down four inches, four feet, you feel that hole in it?
Yeah, the pond serves a really important purpose. There's a lot of water comes from Longhorn, then through our property, then comes into that. And it hits that pond and it does a, and it whips it out down to the low area, which protects this area that you guys are getting ready to put, uh, dirt into. So there, there is a feature to that pond that works with the, with the property.
Yeah, no, the dirt that's there wouldn't fill it.
Well, it doesn't sound like we need to if there's that much water coming across those...
And it's deep, too. I had Richard dig it out extra deep, so...
Well, when he dug it, what was the soil? I mean, it looks black on top, but it surely gets...
It's a, it's a, it's a dark gray, super impermeable clay. I mean, and you could line it up and just make a cannonball out of it. It's like iron.
Yeah, that's what it looks like on top.
I just have a question, miss. The existing annex over at Kent Brown, have you looked at that to see what they have?
I haven't looked at it. No, sir.
I have. It's a, it's also a clay and what, what Fowler was talking about and you were talking about were the same. Since it's not reaching down and touching any rock, that was the problem with that building, was a foot off from one end to the other. Those concrete piers were just sinking in the, in the clay. You know, one was this low, this one was over here and like that.
But there was no pad built to...
There's no, no, there's no, yeah, exactly.
And it hasn't had magnets done on it.
Not until we started messing with it three years ago, I guess.
All right, now, another issue just popped up. I can bring it up. You mentioned how water hits the pond and comes around and washes in. So what's gonna happen to that dirt pad we're building? Because it's definitely gonna grab some of that water that's coming out of that pond.
Well, when it, when it hits the pond, the, the dirt, the dam's high compared, and it just whips right around and goes.
Whip around the inside of the property or outside?
It whips in the pond and then goes straight, it almost cuts a straight west, um, shot and goes towards Ms. Vickers' house and then floods into the lower area where the pecan trees are and then catches the ditch and rolls out.
Could be the direction of, uh, the town hall?
No, no, no. Uh, kind of more south is the direction of town hall.
Kevin?
Yes.
Is, is those concrete pier that's the existing one at Kent Brown sitting on, do you have to know how many?
It's a beam. It's beams. There, it's a big concrete beam down the center and then one on either end. And then all the rest of it's just block and shims. There wasn't any wood in there, but it was, it was just block. It was sinking.
But you had to go in and, uh, if somebody had to go in and do some leveling?
Yes, sir.
And the inspectors said that it has to be, the wood has to be eighteen... And the inspectors said that it has to be, the wood has to be 18 inches above the ground or sort of insects or whatever. It's apparently, it's presumably what we're talking about in the new location, whatever it is, it would be 18 inches above the dirt where the first wood is?
Yes, sir.
So. Okay, so, um, the fellow that's going, or that submitted the quote on the move, Mr. Northcutt, said that, at first he said we could have it grade level in a pier and then he said, well, you can do, because we were, Leland and I were talking about, well, that seems odd. It's a pier and beam, why wouldn't you have it at least a foot up? And then he would block it an additional foot. So it would actually be two foot up, but depending on how council wants to go about that. The current annex or the current piers have, it has, we had to put metal shims underneath it. But if you go and look at it right now, there are cinder blocks that are still leaning. It is not ideal. So, and maybe there's a modified version, because the main thrust right now is the dirt. But the piers, of course, in order to move the building, we have to have something and something decided. You know, maybe there's a modification that would be acceptable or... We do, I brought the account, we do have $47,000 in our account right now. So for those of you who might be worried at the cost of that, it's not gonna break the bank necessarily for the $8100. And that was a really good deal. I think Leland said he couldn't touch that.
No, concrete's $6,000 for that job. So I'm not sure. I mean, concrete and rebars, that's it. He's not even, he must have his own drilling rig and everything. Yeah, so that's a good price.
Leland, so your bids don't show itemized just dirt work if we go that route? Or can we extract what you have in there at 11.7 and just dirt work?
It breaks it down.
Okay, so we can extract.
I think it shows like 11.7.
11.7.
And then you have another 65?
Yes.
Yeah, the 65 is the dirt down Terrell Sand, it's getting hauled up there. The 11.
Are you gonna have to sub out the haul in on the, y'all don't have the truck drive?
Yeah, we got dump trucks.
Oh, you got, you got dump trucks. So, so do you feel like 360 yards is gonna get that job done?
375.
Okay, so 375 at 1.2% tonnage. At 650 a yard, or 650 a ton, that's $2,031 for. Just find the dirt, trucking obviously costs money. I mean, we're not here negotiating, but I'm trying to get a better feel for everybody's bid if we don't go with the pier. Because Roy City Sand and Gravel is gonna bring the dirt for $4,050. Why can't buy that same dirt for $2,030?
Is that the select field? And that's delivered?
No, that's the purchase price.
No, this is delivered price.
It's labor.
Okay, so this, because I verified with him, this is delivered price. This is the select field and the delivery.
I said it's a price, but it's labor donated. If I can buy it for $2,050, is labor not donated?
Well, I think he's talking about labor on the grid.
Well, I think it's the diesel cost. If you're taking 18 loads, your diesel costs are gonna be astronomical.
Yeah, the cost on the dirt.
So what is the average price on a select field since you're in construction?
650 a ton.
650 a ton? At the pit. Okay, then delivery.
You know, I don't know what you would charge. You probably don't do these jobs, like I don't either. But a small trucking job like that, 18 loads, I mean, they're probably gonna get you for 200 bucks a load.
Oh, you're gonna get more than that. Oh, you mean hauling them?
Hauling.
Yeah, yes. They're gonna beat you, they're gonna get more than that.
They're using $1,000 a day in diesel right now.
Yeah, with that, with the diesel price.
So what you thought about with the price of the fill and the hauling? That actually spent a lot of time period.
Right, but if you do piers, you have both prices.
Right.
We're talking about eliminating half of it by.
So. So Leland, for 300, you said 300, now, when you said 375, um, yards of select field, does that include what you suggested about taking away the?
That's the, yeah.
Taking away the top of the dam?
About 1,700 square feet, because you do the building and then you have to do a five-foot foot plan all the way around the building.
Perimeter.
Yeah, foot perimeter, so, yeah.
And that's the question I had for some of the other guys that didn't enter. Are they cutting that four feet down and bringing it all up as one contiguous pad? Or are they just adding 12 inches and sloping it?
No, I know that, when I talked with Mr. Hall, he said that he would, he would make sure it hadn't more than five feet. He said it needed, he felt like it needed to be, you know, at least five feet and then give it a, you know, a nice gentle slope so that you don't have a drop off.
No, I'm saying Leland's recommendation is to cut that side of the tank there to make that pad.
Right, so that's why I was asking.
He's not gonna bid that way, rather than you said that.
Yeah, that dirt's no good.
Yeah, most people are gonna excavate it foot, lock it in, say it's locked in.
You put the whole unit there, so.
So the, you know, and of course, it's 20-yard loads. I imagine we could get the same price if we felt like we needed. So this was for 350, so we would need about a couple more loads to accommodate the 375 to do what you're suggesting.
One, four. If he's using 20-yard trucks, then he's getting plenty of perks, 150, one more truck.
So Leland doesn't have, he doesn't have his labor separate. So if we like the price from Roy City Sand and Gravel, Leland either didn't have the opportunity or the knowledge to extract his dirt work out, his dirt partners do the labor on the pad. So I can't compare Leland.
Yeah, I've got labor on the pad, that's the 11. 11, two, I thought it was.
11.7, dirt scraping and compaction, we will spread and compact. That's just for the labor, no dirt purchase?
No. Dirt purchase at 6,500 with it.
So, um.
That's me bringing it.
But that includes the cut, right?
Yes, that includes the cut and packing in. And like I said, with that kinda dirt, you don't need a lot of water because it's already moist coming out.
They're mixing it that way.
Yeah, it's already pretty moist, so you'll need some water, but not a lot on that select field.
So with Mr. Hall, who is, his bid was, or his quote was $3,000 to prepare the pad. He has his own equipment as well. So that's extremely generous.
You just wanna make sure he's got heavy enough equipment to get.
He has.
He's got 963 cat track loaders, 44,000 pounds.
Oh, yeah.
Where they can hit pads.
Yeah, that'll do it.
I'm glad you know all that.
Glad you know all that.
Yes. Okay. So Matt, thank you, Leland, I appreciate you, thank you so much. Okay, Kevin Sinkovich, did you wanna speak to this?
What should I guys have me think?
Glenn Strauss? Shelley Smith? Patrick Smith? Sherry Benson?
Pass.
It's getting hot, I think. Okay, so. Do we, maybe we should divide and conquer, because there's a lot of parts here. So do we want to maybe address the dirt and the moving of the dirt to the site?
Let's discuss the piers. If we wanna.
Well, the piers is the third step. So the first step would be getting the dirt to the site, right? So the, the, um, so Roy City Sand and Gravel, you said it was 650 a ton, but then their fuel cost and all of that.
The price is still good, it's just.
Is that still good? So he's, okay, so I'm sure he would allow us to do one more load, 19 loads, if that's what's needed.
That's gonna be the other thing. So whoever we choose is a, whoever we choose is the contractor to do it, I mean, if they get out there and it needs more loads of dirt, it's almost like an open-ended approval.
Should we just say 20-yard loads of select field and give a range, maybe?
Roy City Sand and Gravel, that's, yeah, he'll probably bite on that. I almost think whoever the contractor we choose needs to give us a price per yard. $11, $17.
Well, what Roger Hall has says, and I had to ask these questions, is, he said, okay, he would get, so we need at least one load to start and then he would start, he would be, they have to be at the same time. They drop the load, he spreads it, Kevin waters it, they compact it, or maybe they compact it, then they water it. Then another load would come in, same process, and as they build it up to that four and a half foot level. So it needs to happen conjoinedly. So, um, okay, so this Roy City Sand and Gravel, the 225 for delivered loads of 20-yard loads of select field, that is, is that an acceptable price? And do we want to say, okay, 19 loads to maybe arrange to allow for some wiggle room in case they need, finally need extra loads?
So Terry, that's, if I just do simple math, that's $11, $11.25 a yard delivered for select field, which isn't terrible, he's not marketing it up much.
No.
Because I know you can get $10 worth of dirt delivered, but then you pay $500. So, you know, the dirt is cheap, but the trucking is really high, so. $11.25 a yard delivered for select field, that sound like a price?
It's not. Uh, yeah, that's a good price. I just think it needs to be more open-ended and approval with that price. And the other deal is. Maybe.
To how many? 400 or?
There'll be two more loads.
Another thing is, is when you're getting multiple contractors together, Hall's gave us a price and he probably expects it done in one day. If Roy City Sand and Gravel can't put enough trucks on this job, Hall's gonna come back and say, y'all didn't give me any of that dirt, quick enough.
Well, what he said was, there probably should be a dirt, a load or two the night before so he can get started. And then he was understanding that, you know, he did say that he recognized that it may take a little longer than a day, but he was willing to give a weekend to it.
Okay. So, yes.
So do you think 19 to 21, maybe, just in case there's some low line errors? I know that Kevin is actually very good at water, he's dealt with water his whole life. So the, when he says that the pond is a reservoir to allow the water to cut across, he knows what he's talking about. And so if we have to, to, you know, mark, or put a little bit out there to protect the town hall, then we might need to go, is 19 to 21 acceptable on that?
We don't wanna have to come back and have a meeting.
Over that, I would think.
So, yeah, let's overstay it, but.
Okay.
What I, I would put it hard is not to exceed.
Not to exceed 21?
Because if it takes 10 loads, we wanna stop there. Up to 21, that's what I'm saying.
So, Leland, do you have pretty, I know that this actually was one of your estimates. Do you feel pretty confident that that is accurate?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can we ask him now, are the official bids over? Is he willing to separate his bid? Because you got, you got a sand hauler and then you got a guy that just does the dirt.
He doesn't haul the dirt, though. He was gonna have to have another person haul the dirt.
But can?
His bid was 6,000.
Can Leland just price hauling the dirt too? Huh? So the 2,500 on bid 1L?
What he has here is moving it from the back of Longhorn.
Yeah, I guess, and that would be my point of order, Terry. We make sure we're comparing apples to apples because we've considered reusing the topsoil and we don't wanna use topsoil. And so now we're down to bringing dirt from select field from somewhere else. And then we also have the equipment, I think to your point, I just have one throat to choke if we could because that way it slows down the problem on ours. Versus how the equipment guy charges another day's rent on his doser.
Um, so. Okay, so, yes, it kind of, once Leland suggested that we don't use the top, he did check the topsoil and we're very grateful that he did check that. It's, he found it in inferior floor foundation, so he did give a quote on to move it, but then he said, you know, that's really not your ideal choice there. So, but as far as getting 375 yards, um, at $225 a yard delivered, is that something that? 4,500?
Right, so what, so just walked up, the bid, if we don't have a copy of like a.
It's $6,500 for.
Okay, so.
6,500, what is that for?
25, 15 yards, so how many yards is that? 375, so a few, you got, you got a few more yards.
So is, what is the best price?
Well, that's just the trucking, right?
Is hauling and the purchase of the, of the select field?
It's a, Leland's gonna be about $2,000 higher than Roy City Sand and Gravel.
So how about we divide and conquer? Do we want to go ahead and, for the select field, and it's the hauling and the select field, do we have a motion to accept Roy City Sand and Gravel not to exceed 21 yards? And up to 4,500, but not exceeding?
The question, Terry, is, are both of these talking about doing it within the next week or?
Yes, so that's one reason we had a special meeting, because they both slotted Friday of this week, if possible, short of something major happening. So they were trying to get together, yeah.
Well, I guess the reason I ask is, to me, this drought, anyway, is good.
For some things.
You're not gonna get delayed by rain.
Well, that's a positive moment, yes.
Yeah, let's get them in and get it done, the site bad.
So, and Kevin was gonna try and get away from work on Friday to do that, is to do the watering, get the watering tote and, you know, make sure it's watered well. So this, do we have a motion to accept this with the modifications as stated?
This is the.
The Roy City Sand and Gravel.
And the site prep?
Well, this is just the dirt, the select field, moving the select field to the site. So it includes the diesel, the labor and the select field purchase, not to exceed 21 yards and not to exceed, or up to 4,500 by Roy City Sand and Gravel.
So if we, if we break out the excavating piece, are we confident we're gonna be able to get some of these come in and do just the excavations and the spraying?
Well, that's what she's talking about. Roy City Sand and Gravel is just gonna bring the.
That's right.
And then we'll have to build on a excavation company.
But I don't think the site is big enough that we can stockpile in with dirt outside of the excav.
Well, you don't want to, according to the experts, you wanna process the dirt, pack it after each load. You don't wanna just dump it, you can't, you have to.
We wanna strip the site down to the elevation to whatever grade you pick and then start bringing dirt and putting it in a lift. So if we were to approve this, who are we then thinking we're gonna have to do?
We'll have to talk about. You got Shane, Roy Jay and Ailson?
Well, yeah, you're probably not thinking it's this company coordinating. Right. And so we gotta make sure both parties are agreed. Yeah, because otherwise Roy City Sand is gonna bring us a huge pile of dirt and say.
Well, we haven't set a date, definite date, but he did, the coordination would have to happen and I have, you know, I have built a few things, so I've done it.
So I make a motion, we accept the Roy City Sand and Gravel with the conditions we just noted. Contingent on being able to time it to make it work the same day as the other site works.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay, we have a motion made by Anderson, seconded by Jackie. All does in favor accepting Roy City Sand and Gravel with the stated amendments, conditions, and that passes unanimously. Okay, so then, so now that's a separate, a separate issue is the excavation and the moving of the dirt to compact, to level it, like you were saying, to, now, there is a tree that also has to be removed, one cedar tree that's in the way. And both Hall and Leland came out, we talked about the tree that has to disappear. And both Hall and Leland came out, we talked about the tree that has to disappear. It's not very pretty, so it's not the con tree. It, it needs to disappear, and, um, so moving that off, um, and then preparing the, the dirt in a proper manner so that it's, um... Yeah, we already asked on that. Yeah, we're still on three. They all passed. Okay, so we have on the quotes or the estimates, we have, um, Hall, Right Away Services, LBJ Diversified, and, um, HR Dirtworks, who submitted a written quote or estimate proposal.
But HR only said that, uh, they're separating, like, that's going to be hard to do now.
Yes, um, it, yeah, it is, um, hard to...
So we've got LBJ and, uh, Hall.
So Hall is the lower cost option of all of them.
Hall discounted his twenty-five hundred dollars. Now, originally, he had a quote, um, of ninety-five hundred, but that was including sixty-five hundred dollars for the select fill. Um, but then I said, look, we'll probably go direct with, um, you know, we've gotten with the dirt. So then he said, okay, just for my grading and leveling, now here's what it says, it's Hall, Right Away Services. Purpose is to perform work as follows. Hall will strip the designated area for the future site of the Poetry City Hall building, which measures approximately forty by forty feet, give or take. Hall will remove one tree previously noted and walk through. Hall will also spread and compact select fill on the user designated city hall site, again, approximately forty by forty feet, give or take. Please note that the city of Poetry will be responsible for all select fill material cost and trucking of select fill. Also, the city of Poetry will be responsible for the water and labor of administering the water for compaction of the select fill, if needed. Hall does not understand this is the design bill process, there are, may be modifications requested by owner at owner's cost during the process of this project. Um, he expects payment upon completion. Um, he says that the owner's responsibility is to designate areas for staging materials and equipment, provide access to project, provide water source, provide clear and specific right-of-way limits, plan and specs if necessary, notify of any live utilities or newly installed utilities that may conflict with this project. There are no utilities, by the way. Um, provide locations via map, and we have done that. And then he has on grading and leveling a future city hall, uh, building pad, fifty-five hundred, then he said he was going to discount it by twenty-five hundred, so the final total would be three thousand.
The only question on his is how deep is he excavating? Hall will strip designated areas. That's kind of what I was asking Leland earlier. I mean, a lot of people are just going to strip a foot of topsoil off that thing. Leland's going to dig out probably thirty, forty yards of dirt before you even get started, won't you? No? I don't know how severe that damn slope is.
It's like four feet. So it, one, um, the one thing that Hall said was that the dirt won't mesh, and so he was aware, it's, look, the dirt's not going to mesh. So, I mean, I think he, um, no disrespect to Leland at all, um, but he did say he would, um, he was aware of that. Um, yes, and so are there comments on this particular? Okay, so, counsel?
I'll make a motion, we accept Hall's three thousand dollar estimate.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I have a second.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the Hall Right Away Services, um, for grading and leveling a future city hall building pad? All those in favor? And that passes unanimously. Okay, so, thirdly, the piers, um, do y'all want to take a break? Go to the kitchen? Okay. All right, let's get going. Okay, so, okay, so the, um, the, the piers, now, Northcut, I, I feel like when he said forty-five piers, my thought was initially, are you kidding? Forty-five? That seems excessive. Um, but maybe there's a happy medium somewhere, and, but you guys may or may not have more experience with that. I've had, I've had piers put in my home, but I'm no expert, so...
So this is all a whole different language for me, so I don't, I'm having to take my lead off of councilman power. But, um, something I heard, I thought I heard you say earlier, is that Northcut, well, which is the moving and leveling crew, wanted piers?
He did say that, and, um, I was, I was kind of like, like I said, I was really surprised it was so many. He wanted them every four foot. And he did say that he, he ties them together with, um, just like a mobile home, you tie the piers together, and if they're, they're deep, then that's going to hold better, um...
Better, but not perfectly, but my, my concern is we're talking about potentially removing piers or not going with...
Yeah, because he told me, he didn't think we need them.
Okay, it's, it's, I'm just want to make sure that he will still move it if we don't put the forty-five piers in.
He did say that, because he told me that...
I asked him a specific question, okay, we sit this on Bodark's blocks, just like it's made. He said, it can, I tried to tell him that.
That's news to me. So maybe it's getting it mixed up, because we don't have Bodark stumps under ours. None of it has Bodark stumps.
Terry, you got Bodark.
A Bodark tree that's been cut, because they're so hard. That, that's real typical. And maybe these aren't sitting on it. Obviously, it's just a loose term for blocking.
Well, there's a house down the road that has Bodark stumps, and we've been underneath it, and it lasts, it does last for over a hundred years, um, but...
Bodark is the tree with the, with the...
I don't have, I don't even know if he can get it now. Can you get those? He has them. So how deep, so why would he say to us? Now, he did come out and look at the annex building, and he, then after that, he did say that, and maybe we need to defer and get, and I'm not saying, because, because you said Bodark, that makes me think, maybe he's thinking of another situation? I don't know, because we don't have any Bodark under that building whatsoever.
Well, that's just a loose term, I mean, blocking, typically they're going to be Bodarks. But, uh, I just, yeah, I mean, I'm not the expert on this, and I just know how many buildings out there. That's a, that's a, how many square feet do we say that building was?
It's around eleven hundred.
Eleven hundred square foot building. Uh, I mean, it's not a heavy building.
How deep is the Bodark, though?
They sit on top of the ground, so you get a concrete pad that's probably eighteen by eighteen or twenty by twenty, and that's what the ground surface is to keep your wood off the ground. And then they put the Bodark posts in there, uh, so, as a block. It's a, it's a old school period being stopped building. They're, they're, they're not forever, but neither are these piers. There's no bells, there's no, there's no geotechnical reports, there's no soil remediations, there's no water injections. Those piers are going to go up and down in that soil, and that, when that, when we do get rain, and that clay takes all that rain in, it's going to ebb over. So I hope, so we do engineered slab, so does Leland. There's a geotechnical report that comes with every pier design. My house has less piers in it than this eleven hundred square foot. So I, I, I...
I thought that was excessive.
It's excessive to me, and, and, and I, I know you said we have forty-five thousand dollars, and, and maybe I'm the tight one of the group, but, uh, eighty-one hundred dollars, I would like to just try the Bodark stumps, especially because I know there's hundreds and hundreds of houses out here sitting on Bodarks.
So, so what is the difference in cost?
I think we might have to clarify that, but he says in his bid, block and level, so that, to me, he's going to provide the blocks.
Well, but I, I, I mean, I think we need to make another pass at Mr. Northcut, to make sure he understands he's now putting the house on top of dirt.
Mm-hmm.
Not concrete, because that may cause him to use a different footing block to start stacking the cinder blocks on. So I think in fairness, we don't want to spend his money for it. We probably just need to clarify, okay, we're going to give you ninety-five percent compacted soil, if you feel comfortable. You can, well, whatever, you can do your four-foot spacing, but you're going to need your cinder blocks that you were throwing in, and you're also going to need something to set on the ground. I think that's the...
And it currently has, like Kevin said, and I've been under there, too, it, it does have, it has beams across, and that's another possible addition for stability, is to put some beams across.
But they're not going to be locked in, they're going to start soil or...
Yeah, they're just sitting on the ground like that, on the ground, but they're not even there. So, so Bodark stump sitting on a concrete block of some sort, how big is that log?
Like I said, eighteen by eighteen, twenty by twenty, something between...
Now, how thick?
Two inches.
Two inches, now.
It's just a concrete paper.
And so we still need forty-five?
He said around forty-five blocks is what he put under that.
So if you forty, it'd be forty-five blocks instead of forty-five piers?
He has, he has blocks on his bill anyway, so I'm assuming he provides the blocks regardless of it. The, the concrete piers were never going to support the building. It was going to get blocked, it was piers and blocks. So the piers, if you look at the bid, it was the ground level. Well, then the building doesn't sit at ground level, it gets blocked above that. So the blocks are there regardless if we have a pier under them or we have properly compacted soil under them. The blocks are still in place.
Well, I guess I'd say like this, if it was three thousand dollars for the, uh, Bodark, which you talked about, I'd say, yeah, I'd do it. If it's seven thousand, well, maybe that's...
And I, and I don't think it's any additional. We might need to clarify that, but when, when I look at his bid, which is very, uh, nondescript, it says move one or two miles, block and level.
You're talking about...
Northcut.
Now, and of course, with the, with what councilmember Anderson was saying, it is a pier and beam, so it has a skirt, so it needs to be at least eighteen to twenty-four inches above the, the grade, otherwise you're going to have rot happening, so...
I don't want to have...
I think there, we need more information.
Well, how about we don't do anything with the mover yet, and we can come in this week and put it on the agenda?
We can do that.
We don't have to have that decided to do dirt work.
No.
Move, move right roughly in the middle of...
August sixteenth.
So as long as we have the dirt, it can be moved, it needs to be compact anyway, we can come back next week, and hopefully we'll have additional information, then we can make a, a wise decision on, on the actual foundation, whether we want Bodark or piers, or maybe a combination thereof, who knows?
But in the meantime, we're going to go ahead with the site work.
Um, we have the go-ahead already, so...
So, so that, to me, provides Northcut or Murray is something to come look at and make sure that's what they like. In other words, if they do that next Friday, or Friday...
This, today's Tuesday, so they're talking about this Friday, possibly.
This Friday?
Possibly.
So then by Tuesday, meeting, we should be able to have him say, yeah, I can do it, this is what his bid is.
We can get him out, yeah.
I don't think he's going to need to look at it.
He, he, it's hard getting him out, but...
So the other option, or is we could approve the thirty-five hundred dollar expenditure, and if the charts out there was not included, then we would just simply approve a different amount of expenditure?
Did, did anyone else come up with a mover? I know I contacted Patriot, they only do mobile homes, and then the other one that was seventy-five hundred, he never submitted a written bid. He, he talked on the phone, but he, he said, well, if you can get thirty-five hundred, you should go with it.
Is that High Tower?
High Tower. And he said, well, I know Northcut, he does a good job, but he's not making any money. That was his comment, I'm like, well, we need inexpensive stuff.
Well, I guess I'm, I'm the opinion of we go ahead, as Connor's point said, we take Northcut at thirty-five hundred and then give things clarified by Tuesday, after he can see the pad. If he'll throw it all in for thirty-five hundred, we're good. If it's additional, then we'll come back in our next meeting and vote on whatever the difference is. Hopefully we'll have a pass done, but, because it may, Terry said, he may be counting on, um, starting with the dirt going up.
And then he did say he would, I'm sorry for interrupting.
Okay.
He did say, um, that he, uh, he was slammed, and he was very busy, and I said, okay, we're working on it. He said, well, then, then that's confusing, because he says, well, I need those piers, and, and then I'll come look at it. So we need clarification, I believe.
And, and the problem is, he's not a, he's not a, uh, foundation expert. He's a house mover. But you have to take that, don't take that lightly. He's been doing it a long time. But at the end of the day, he is not a foundation expert. And I bet you, if you ask him how many buildings over the years he's put on Bodark posts versus concrete piers, that he, I mean, it'd be overwhelming.
You're probably right. Is there a problem with just moving both of these to next week, so we can get some more information?
Which one?
Uh, the Northcut, uh, quote in our drilling quote, so that, you know, because they're kind of worked together.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we do that.
Okay, so just hold off and put that on the agenda for Tuesday of next week, our regular meeting?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? And that passes? All right, so, um, I didn't miss anybody, did I? So number four, where we kind of morphed into number four, discuss and consider proposals for moving, uh, building, moving company to move the annex building, and that's kind of what we've determined to move to next week. Was there anyone that wanted to speak to that? Kevin Sinkovich? Glenn Strauss? Uh, Shelley Smith? Uh, Patrick Smith? Sherry Benson? Okay. All right, under general, uh, comments, um, you're limited to three minutes. I finally modified the sheets. Um, Kevin Sinkovich? Glenn Strauss?
I'm just in awe of you guys. Thank you very much for the work you do.
Thank you, Glenn.
Lack of air.
Yeah.
Shelley Smith? Patrick Smith? And Sherry Benson? Okay, the time is eight sixteen, and adjourned.